And it gets clear over there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't go that far.
Yeah, that's good.
Alright.
Let us start crunching the library.
It's a homework calculator on generator. I'll be wanting to sneak you out of the way.
I can't remember how we began it up here.
Hi Ellen, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Oh, Hector, did he leave?
Yes.
Hey, I got my stuff in.
We still got Gary.
Gary.
Okay, this gentleman was here, his wife was the blonde, he was talking.
Oh, good.
Okay.
And now he's not here.
Oh.
He was here.
Oh.
You know, he walked in. I can't have this one, I'm not trying.
Oh, okay. Someone already had a sandblad.
Okay, she wouldn't really try.
No, she had stuff going on. It's okay, your stuff that you had got basically squared, the one thing squared away. So, I got an answer out of Matt, yeah. And he was supposed to send his resignation letter in by five, but he must have not got it. I mean, it's no big deal, but I've got a text message from him saying that he's resigned. So, uh, when I do the president's thing, I'm just gonna put it out that we had a resignation and then we're gonna open it for a couple of years.
Yeah, he's a hard one.
I've been asking.
He did that. Two, and it was like.
Sam wanted me to explore. No one's got other stuff to do.
Well, you mentioned something about, uh, CAD or? Did you talk to him about it, or?
She's very interested.
He is interested, okay, more than twenty.
His wife can. She's more than twelve.
Oh, okay. Well, I think, I think I'm gonna do basically what we did last time, we'll open it up for a couple, two, three weeks. We'll see what we get, and then we'll make some decisions out of that, if that's alright.
Sounds good.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still on the green side of the field.
Can you guys report in?
I don't know, maybe it was like too late.
I guess, uh, yeah, I'll have to see what time everything is and.
I know you talked about, I talked to you about it.
Yeah, okay, well, let's see what's going on, because they told us that I would be over here too, so, let's see what's going on.
My bill to, uh, the quarter of the clock and.
Yeah, the quarry meeting six, what time is the player?
Seven thirty. Might be asleep, if it's over here, he might be asleep outside. I think that probably won't do.
Um, Ellen, did you ever do the resignation before? I'm just thinking maybe somebody else should do this instead of me. Uh, I don't think it really matters, but. I suppose I could just read off and then you could make the motion to.
Sure.
Uh, approve of all. Uh, yeah, we're fine. Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that they were really being, you know, going under.
I got a seat saved for you.
No.
A seat saved for you at the burden range.
Yeah, it's gotta be through us, yeah. And next, what I was gonna try and make clear is. When's that, so are you coming?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, because I was gonna try and make it clear that everything has to go through us before they.
To us of what they're actually want.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So I just. I had to disturb.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that they were gonna. Because when, as soon as I saw it on Facebook, I mean, I don't remember this.
That was never approached.
No, it wasn't.
He tried to get in the hole, he only missed on the only good segment down at the quarry.
Why, why do you know yours?
Well, he tried to get his little sandblasted and I was taking pictures of people driving up on the point, I'm like, oh, this is. And, uh, girl in the bus. Threw him up there one time, just bumping back and stuff and. Just wonderful. Had a big old time. Big party.
When was that?
On Saturday. So I called Jim up after I called the streets and driving up. The one guy in another pickup tried pulling up there and backed off because the others were up there. His sandblasted was like.
Yeah, I told him that they drove right past the sign that said no vehicles back in here. So they started pulling out, and I heard him say something smart, but I couldn't hear what it was. As soon as he hit that sign where it says not to come past that point, I had my wife's vehicle parked off to the side right there. And he just lit them up and went all the way down through the parking lot, and I mean, almost hit the back of my wife's derangle.
It was a busy day.
And I wasn't being rude or nothing, I was like, hey, man, I'm not supposed to be backing your vehicle, you know, just take it away.
Why is it that went over there and did that first, so then it was on Facebook? That everybody was.
Yeah.
Was complaining about it.
And Kyle actually gave him a ticket, yeah, because if he doesn't, how is that justified?
Yeah.
And he ended up getting a hundred eighty-seven dollar ticket to go up there to clean up the truck. He needs to ask permission from the board, or at least contract.
Well, that's what I mean. They think he can do anything he wants. And it's like, well, kind of a committee. It's quite a thing.
Okay? Yeah, I'll be calling next week.
I can hear you talking about.
Did she tell you?
Yeah, she said you were.
I'm, I'm, didn't want to.
Oh, yeah. Is anybody representing the fire department tonight, or?
John's here. It's a very deep, dark part.
Everybody's had a chance to review it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I don't officially have it, but I have a text message from him stating that he's going to send in his resignation. He was gonna try and have it in by five o'clock today, but I don't see it yet, so he must have just kept busy. So, I just sent him a text message back and said, you know, it's really convenient, can you send it over? And when you're coming through town, drop your tag off and stuff. Uh, last I heard, he's moving up to Stevens Bourne.
That's where he been working, that's where he keeps his school.
Yeah, I knew the boys were in his school.
Traveling nurses. It's heck of a racket.
Yeah, he was in Green Hill the last time, man.
I was expecting to see him at the office, but.
That's where I was last Friday. Is that where you were? Oh, you were in Bay, okay, yeah. I spent Monday, I was just saying he's going to hyperbaric chamber because, uh, got gassed in here the other day, Friday night. Somehow the, yeah, I, I ended up getting an A, it was right in my work, so. Uh, we got some in there now, I thought the one in there was working, but obviously it wasn't, so. Going from DeWolfs to Hancock. We're going to Princeton, then we're going to Hancock, then we're working our way back around to. Sluggers. Yeah, and then coming back to, yes, horse socks. Yeah, yeah, we are, parks, I know we are.
Are you riding?
I can't ride this year, but I'll be, I'll be driving or waiting behind watching stuff, so.
Oh, we'll probably see him, he's gonna be around.
Yeah, alright.
You want to reset it?
Yes. Definitely.
You like it on the mountain of the movie theater?
Yeah, it'd have to be a little higher up. Something to get in, you know, the, 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 the theater in his home. Oh, it's a good time. Before it became a fire station. Oh, that's a, sure, that's a good one. It's not too bad.
And just look at it.
The details.
I wonder if I got it caught.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, it just need, yeah, new request. Well, he couldn't, he told me he couldn't, came with me ideas and. I know, but I think he wanted out of his mouth. Oh, my God, that was so hard. Two hours just.
Yes.
Same guy.
That's Dylan.
I'm asking.
You called Dylan?
Um, is that what you, what do you want us to do?
He never sent anything more to me after the meeting, and I agree with him.
I don't wanna stand out, they have six thirty now, so.
He could have, I mean, he could just call.
He didn't mention anything to me, so. I don't really think we have anything to worry about, so. Ellen, I guess we're gonna call this order. Everybody ready?
That's right.
Alright, we're gonna call this meeting in order. Uh, it is six thirty. Roll call.
Ellen?
Here.
Dylan? Jim?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Gary?
Yep.
Mark?
Here. Approval of agenda.
Oh, should you approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so. Public forum, person, persons asking to speak to board reasonable amount of time, not to exceed five minutes. Do we have anybody signed up?
I wasn't aware we needed to sign up, but I'd like to address the board.
Um, I, I will make an exception this time because we're just kinda starting this whole process, so. Um, if you would like to speak, you can, five minutes, sir.
Alright, Brian Welch, I'm representing Welch Street Farm. I'm here about the special assessment on the water and sewer bills. First off, we're not on either one of those. Was agricultural land even considered when you were sending out the notices for the special assessment?
I guess I'm not exactly sure, I know we've had, oh, Glenn Beck here has, uh.
Yeah, uh, I think we got chatted with you.
You're chatting to my brother, yeah.
Yeah.
We're still waiting on the full application from the public service commission. That grant is admitted.
Yeah, did you go through their, their, uh, their website to ask any questions? Uh, because basically, what they do is they look at all tax parcels. Doesn't matter if they're, you know, uh, within the, the village's water service, with water mains or not, and take, they just take all lots.
I understand that, that's completely correct, and you can assess that for fire.
Right.
The real question is agriculture is completely prohibited from special assessments by state statute.
This is not really a special assessment, like, by definition of a special.
That's the only way you can get something on fire protection on sewer and water. That's why we'd like to see the application that you submitted in its entirety, not the first page, the entire application.
What was sent to you was, was not the application, it was the tariff. And that's what we are given from the, the public service commission. And that, that shows, um, you know, the, the rates for all classes of users and then the operation rules, right? So that's not the application. Um, but we do have a contact, now, I can share that with you.
That would be wonderful, I'd like that.
You could email him and, and you could ask him, but it, this is really not a special assessment. I mean, it's a, it's a.
That's what we'd like to find out, because it's very specific what you can do with handle on the special assessment. By state statutes.
Yes, and again, it is not a state statute, okay, so, when, when you look at public fire protection, this is, this is something that has changed in the last seven, eight years, maybe. Um, to pay for public fire protection can be on the tax rule or it can be on the water bill.
That's correct.
And, uh, many communities are switching this over, in fact, it, it may be eighty percent of the state shorting it, you know? Um, so, um, um, the, the, the way they calculate that then is by looking at all the, the storage capacity, the pumping capacity, the amount of hydrants, the size of the main feed and hydrants, the, the ability to deliver water, right? And, and then that is, that is spread out amongst everybody evenly, in a fair, equitable way, so they say. I'm sure you disagree, and many others would too, right? But this is the state we're dealing with, and they have their, their methods. So, um, um, that is for if, if indeed your, um, uh, you know, improvements or your land goes on, gets, you know, uh, starts on fire, right? That they have access to, um, uh, production of water.
I understand that completely, sir. What I'm trying to get at is the letter sent to us said it's a special assessment. That therefore triggers the sanctions. That's why I wanted to add the application what you stated and what you applied for from the public service commission is. So that I can apply the correct statutes to what you said.
This is.
You said it was a special assessment for fire protection.
I, I don't have that letter here, I don't know.
That's exactly what it said. The second question is, what is the projected revenue for this special assessment? What are you planning on taking in?
Uh, it's approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, now is that then going to all, then going to the fire department?
Uh, it goes to the water department for fire protection, uh, ability. It, it's, it's actually a water department fee that's calculated in the rates.
Well, if it's a fee, if it's a fee.
The real estate taxes were paying it, right? And, and so the, 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 the board decided that it was in the best interest of, to have the water department collect it and pay for that expense, okay?
Okay.
Alright.
I just, Brian, I just wanna say one thing and then.
Yeah.
I know the village is in trouble and they need money. And I'm all for that, having money, but I didn't think that I'd have to pay the whole thing. I'm getting assessed for eighteen lots because I bought land in different times, so. You're going according to the, um, the way that it's listed in the assessments for the taxes. With the taxes, I would have paid about four hundred dollars extra. Now I'm paying sixteen hundred dollars extra. Now, if you think in your mind this is a fair and equal, equality thing, fine, and I will pay it. But I'm not a happy camper, and that's all I wanted to say, so, and if there's other, other ways to get this money into the village, maybe you should look into them, but maybe it would be worse than what we already have, so, okay.
When does the sewer and water committee meet? Because I'd rather do that than take up this time.
Um, well.
You have to set a date.
Yeah, we'll have to set a date up for it, so if you'd like to have a meeting, we can set a date for that. And, uh, do you?
I will give my card to that gentleman.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, if you had a phone number that we could get.
And then the other thing is, on your website, please change the board meeting time, it's not seven o'clock, as it's clearly stated on the website. I had to look at the village minutes. It's six thirty it starts. And number two is, please post the agenda prior to the meeting on the website.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyway, thank you.
Okay, so, is there anybody else that needed to speak?
Thank you, board.
You're welcome, ma'am, thank you too. Um, there was, uh, a request to speak, but the fella did not want to, uh, speak on his own, so he was wanting this, uh, read. Um, it's, uh, Dean Matheson, address is two zero five zero E E. Um. Regarding recycling fee, I have heard that frequently our recycling waste is not recycled, it actually goes straight to the landfill. Further, is there any way to cancel pickup? Um. Can we have a waste management employee speak on? The path, recycling, uh, waste takes? This would reassure the Red Granite residents that we are getting what we are paying for. And then, number two, please confirm, uh, home in the village of Red Granite that does not have city water or sewer should be billed for PFP fees. Explanation seems fairly clear, but this may help out, outline residents, thank you. Um, as far as the recycling, um, it's kind of a coincidence that we had this come about, but it does not go all straight to the landfill, it does get recycled. Um, waste management is having some issues with people throwing things in to the garbage that should not be in there, and they sent some pictures, and anybody that would like to look at these pictures, you can see how the stuff is, um, separated and stuff like that in the truck. Um, they actually have cameras up in the back that you can see, um, when they dump these, they can keep an eye on what's going on, and they do have two separate sections in each truck, so, if you watch on the top, there's a door that flops back and forth that. The waste goes on one side, recycling goes on the other side, and I can't exactly speak to how they recycle it all over there at waste management, but I've seen other places where they go through a whole process and it all gets sorted out and separated. Um, so, that's probably about the best that I can answer as far as the stuff going straight to the landfill, it, it shouldn't be, and, and should not be going that way. Um, the, um, as far as somebody speaking, um, I guess it would have been nice if we could have maybe tried to get somebody here, but the time scheduling and everything else just wasn't really accessible at this time. And then, um. Uh, let's see, as far as the PFP, um, I guess you kinda heard what Glenn was speaking about before, and Glenn can speak to that a little bit better than I can. Um, so, if, uh, you would like to have a little bit, better explanation as to the PFP, we can get you in touch with Glenn, and he can, you know, help give a little better explanation as to how things are going. We're trying to explain to everybody the best we can as, kind of on a case by case basis, or as people show up here, um, but, uh. There's a lot of things that we're trying to work through yet, and it's not a perfect situation yet, there's still some things that we have to figure out and, and see how we're gonna work on this. We've got a lot of questions into the lawyer and stuff right now, so hopefully, within the next month or so, we can get a lot of these questions answered for folks and try and get this system fixed up a little bit, so.
So, if you can't address this meeting, because that person's not available, you have to.
Oh, yeah, you, you'd have to give me your name and, and address, please.
I'm Wendy Matheson, so my address is.
Okay.
So, if you can't do it this meeting, can it be put on the next calendar?
Oh, sure, if you would like more, but I, I guess what I was wondering, would you like somebody to sit down and go over this with your concerns a little bit closer, so that we can kinda understand what it is that you're looking for?
My name is Dean Matheson.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my concern with the recycling is, I'm hearing this from the people that I drop my garbage off to, when I don't have it picked up. And they're saying, well, it, it probably just goes into the landfill anyway. And then, if you go to our dump. Um, there, if, if the bins aren't full, they're certainly not, when, when you have mixed use recycling now, and you have wet paper, and you have things in that bin that don't belong in that bin, um. That, that's something that is probably preventing us from having recycled property. So my concern is, can we have somebody from the company that we're paying as a town, village, come to this meeting in the future and explain to us the do's and don'ts, and where our, where our stuff ends up, and. If it does end up in the landfill, if we don't do it right, or are we fine if we don't do it right, and is it costing us more than we'll do? That's the kinda thing I hope.
Yeah, and to be.
Understand why this costs.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, that's exactly what we're gonna be doing with this. Um, we got this just the other day, so, we're gonna try and have a meeting and actually, and actually, I think we were talking about maybe even putting something in like the water bills, so that people can see what's going on, because, like I said, if you look at these pictures, there's a lot of stuff that's being put in, there's drain oil that was put in this one, there's an air conditioner in one of them, and we can't keep having that because, um, like you said, you know, it, it's actually destroying what could be recycled and things like that. So, that was something that we're gonna start working on now too, so that we can get the explanation out there for people, so people know what can and can't go in. So, yes, as to that question, we are going to be working on that over this, uh, next month till the next meeting.
Also, that, when you talk about the site out here, that's the county's.
Yeah.
It's not ours.
Alright, as far as the water goes, it was just a concern, I thought it might be helpful again, uh, because I called in and asked, well, if I'm not on a, if I'm on my own well, and I'm not, and I'm on my own septic, why am I paying for fire? It's a volunteer fire department, my place will probably get the ashes by the time they get there. Well, it was explained to me very well by the gentleman I spoke to on the phone about not filling up the tanker with pond water, and not getting the algae growing in the tanker, and all of that. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's some explanation here that if folks are going to receive, hopefully they never have to, you know, the volunteer fire department come out, this is what you're paying for, and yes, it was on the tax bill, and no, it's not gonna be on the tax bill in the future, and we. And we should all hope to see a reduction in our tax bill as a result.
All I can tell you from the fact that expenses for the operations of the fire district are just going up, not down. Everything, when I was on, is about a quarter, you know, what, what it is now. Just for bunker pads and coats, we're talking thousands of dollars. And to replace one truck, we're talking what, almost five hundred thousand dollars. So, and then, fees have to be paid somewhere, and the money has to come in somewhere. But the other stuff you're talking about, that, the PFP, that goes for the maintenance of the water system. So we do have water to supply for the fire department. So it has to be distributed equally among everybody, otherwise it's just not fair.
Any other questions we can help you with, sir? And if, and if you have any more questions that you come up with, feel free to give us a call or uh, me personally, uh, I mean, my number's out there. Just give me a holler and I'll do the best I can to try and help you out. And if I don't know it, I'll figure it out for you, okay?
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time, sir. All right, anything, anybody else? Okay, then, uh, we are going to approval of the minutes.
I have a motion. We approve them as, as mail as sent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, reports. Uh, clerk forthcoming events and correspondence.
Um, we received a letter and a dividend check from, um, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities for return premiums in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And they said over the last fifteen years, um, they have returned twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to the Red Granite. And then my second thing is, is I'll be gone, uh, to the parks, um, conference starting tomorrow. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, president's forthcoming events and correspondence. Um, all I have at this moment is, uh, Matt Nolenberg has now resigned from the board as of this time. Um, so, I would like to thank him for helping out and doing all the stuff that he did. He was a very good trustee and did a lot of work on a lot of stuff. And I'm gonna actually kinda miss working with him because he was very knowledgeable on a lot of stuff, so I'd like to thank him for that. Um, I did personally thank him today. And then, uh, I would also like to put out that, uh, we are going to be looking for another trustee. Um, I'd like to kinda have everybody speak out there and see if anybody's interested. I would like to have somebody appointed and in position, hopefully by the next board meeting. So if anybody knows of anybody that might be interested in helping out, um, you can call the village hall, leave a name and number, and then we will give everybody a call back and see who we can fit in here. Um, so, other than that, I don't believe I have anything else for the president. So, we are going to move on to finance, personal insurance. Uh, approval of bills listed for payment and financial report. So the general fund, we have checks number one zero 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 one four four eight four through one zero 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 one four five four four in the amounts of seventy-one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Water fund, we have checks number six two zero 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 five seven seven zero through six two zero 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 five seven eight eight in the amount of five thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and ten cents. Sewer fund, we have checks number six two zero 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 six five four six through six three zero 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 six five five eight in the amount of ten thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. ARPA funds, we have check number one zero zero dash two one 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 zero through one zero zero four four three zero. And then, looks like we have numbers one hundred five one one zero zero three four zero through six three zero eight five six zero zero three four zero in the amount of so it looks like we had a total. All right, something may make sense here. So we have debits of ninety-one thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents, credits of ninety-one thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Then we have payroll. Um, so we have check number thirteen seven twenty-six through thirteen seven seven four in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents for a grand total of one hundred eight thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, so, update, consider act on deputy clerk training. Um, so, I spoke with, um, Mary about a week ago. And, um, it sounds like she's pretty confident that things have been going fairly smoothly, that Gina's been coming along pretty good. She knows quite a bit of what's going on, but she does feel that there's um, some questions that are gonna be, needed to be answered and things like that. Um, Christie's been coming in on Tuesdays to help out with Becky on certain things. And so, I kinda was talking to Mary about maybe just coming in one day a week for a little bit, because she can only go until September, and then she has to be totally done because of her stuff. But at least that way, it's got a couple days, a, a week where Gina, if she has questions, she can ask questions of Christie on Tuesday and then can ask questions of Mary on Thursday. And Mary has also offered to help out a little bit. Um, like Becky's got some things coming up where she's not gonna be here for a few days. And so, Mary would be available to help out a little bit here and there as needed. Um, so, I said that I would recommend to the board that, I thought that that was a pretty fair assessment and was going to propose it to everybody here and see what their thoughts were.
I think that if that's, that's what's needed, we should go with that.
Okay.
We have two weeks left in the month.
My opinion is we need to cut the ties soon. Can't keep paying up financially all these people in the office.
Yep.
And a lot of times until you get, you have to do a job on, by yourself. You're then going to either know it, or then you're gonna know what your definite questions are. I don't think they need somebody standing over their shoulder continually.
And I agree. Um, I personally think that, um, where Gina's at at the moment, she has gained a lot of knowledge and has gotten to the point where she can handle it quite a bit on her own. But there still are questions that need to be answered here and there, some of those steps and things like that. And that's why I thought, you know, maybe one day a week wouldn't be such a bad deal just to get us through a little bit longer and try and help Gina move a little bit quicker into her position. And like I said, Mary needs to be done by the end of September anyways because of the way her, um, wages are gonna change, so she needs to be done by the end of September.
How many days a week is she in as of today or recently?
She hasn't been in a couple weeks. She came in for a little while.
Okay, so she may be one, once a week.
She said she hasn't been here in the last couple of weeks, really. Came in Monday for a little bit.
I think it's time.
You personally think that would be helpful?
I think she's gonna be gone this week.
Yep.
Chris is coming in Tuesday.
Couple days for like the next.
Yeah, Mary come in maybe Thursday. After they're done, because that's the end of the month and next week anyway, for in September. After, next week. So it would be done anyway, so maybe one day and then. So we got two days with her, Christie and Mary this week, and then.
Done by the end of August. Not going into September?
No, uh, just, just next week, because then Becky will be back from her training.
I'd go along with that, but I'm.
Just this week.
Yep. So that at the end of August, it's done.
Yeah, that's gonna be, I don't know, like I said, next weekend anyway.
Mark, you got an opinion on this?
Um, I guess if she's, you think you'd be, that'd be something you could work with if it was just for another week?
She's not gonna be in this week.
So she's not even gonna be here this week?
And Christie isn't either.
So it'll just be you until you get back from your training, which is?
Next Monday.
So, I guess we're talking about more point. What's that? I was just.
Well, basically, we've got four days after that. The twenty-eighth through the thirty-first.
Can I, uh, ask a question? Tina, Tina, how comfortable are you with the job right now?
I'm comfortable. There's just things that come up.
Right, yeah, I understand.
And there, there, I don't know the whole program, and it, it takes time to learn that.
I, I agree, I just.
And making mistakes. I'm here longer, putting in more hours, trying to figure it out for myself.
Well, I understand it. I'm just, you know, I understand that there will be points that you're gonna come across by yourself that, you know, you're not gonna be able to handle. But you do have re, you have resources you could call, you know, to?
I'm actually watching the, the, um, tutorials on the.
Oh, okay.
On the computer for to learn the program, there's tutorials. But I have to do that when I'm not working, because I don't have time.
Right, I understand.
While I'm working. And every time I have an error, like, you know, you see, you know, a few of those checks there that I had to get voided out, there was a problem. And I could've used some help from Mary, but she wasn't here. So there are things where there are problems where people could help. But, you know, when you don't have it, and you, you don't know what, I don't know what I'm doing wrong, and it just kept popping up, and I didn't even know it was there.
Right.
So there's things that I don't know. And if you want this to be really messed up, it can happen. But, I mean, it just helps if someone's there before it gets too out of control to say, hey, this needs to be done.
No matter what we do, yeah, there's not gonna be nobody there to help her this week anyway. So she's gonna be on her own the rest of the week.
Mm-hmm.
So, what, there's nothing we can change about that. And then, next, after that's the end of the month. And Becky will be back.
Because Becky doesn't know what I do. I was never trained over on that side, so I can't. That could be over.
Well, then you definitely need some cross-training in there.
That costs money.
I realize that, but I did work in an office setting in which we learned each other's positions and what was involved in the office on county time. So the time factor and money, it's not gonna cost any more than, as long as you report to work and you start trying to learn some of it.
So you learned it all in two months, everybody's job?
I'm saying, pretty much, yes.
Okay, so you could do whatever.
Because I was ready to go into the courtroom, just like you're ready to come.
I guess basically what we're trying to figure out here is, are we gonna keep Mary on to one more month, one day a week, or not?
I would say one day a week would be acceptable if the alternative is that we have to shop for another employee for the next three months or however long it took to get the deputy that we have today, so. You said she hasn't, she hasn't been there? Mary, you said Mary hasn't been there for two weeks?
No. She hasn't been there. Monday, maybe? She's been gone, yeah. She might've been there a little bit on Monday.
And six months a week, that's only four more times.
And she wasn't going to.
Six more times before Mary's gonna be done anyway.
So, it's only four hours, you know, three hours, four hours, it's not like that long. I can see the wages, you see, I mean, it's not that much.
So does anybody wanna make a motion as to what we would like to do here?
A motion to extend once a week for Mary until the end of September.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Opposed?
Oh.
Okay. All right, so machinery, garbage ordinances, Gary Rendzel, Ellen Caswell. Consider, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry. Consider slash act on a response slash answer a request from Dean Matheson.
Already done.
Done already.
Already done. Check, checked off.
All right.
By me, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on to parks and cemetery, Ellen Caswell and Gary Rendzel.
Update on cemetery, my gatches.
Yeah, it's kind of an uneventful, uh, beginning of the year. We wanna thank the village crew for the removal of a couple of dead tamarack trees. And I've gotten, um, compliments from people in the cemetery that, uh, cemetery is looking good. Um, this year so far, um, our first in, inurnment um, didn't happen until June twenty-third. And since that time, we've had one full burial, three inurnments, I've marked for three headstones, and showed five people, uh, the cemetery grave sites, of which, um, they bought seven grave sites. Um, the one thing that, and I talked to Jim about, is as the grave sites have been sold, um, the road that is along the north side of the cemetery was just where somebody started driving. And as, um, headstones are put in place, and that's a reason for the, um, traffic cones out there now is because one of the lots toward the back of the cemetery, toward the, the west end of the cemetery, they put a headstone in that is a surface mounted headstone. Um, and so I had to put up a couple posts and cones or it was gonna get driven over. So, um, talked to Jim, and after Labor Day, we're gonna go out and take a look at what the layout is, and we may have to put some posts along that edge there to keep the, the traffic area out away from the cemetery plots. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Mike.
Update on quarry park, Jim?
Um, as of right now, uh, we're coming up with some ideas as to how to possibly raise some money. Uh, we were talking about possibly doing like a fall festival, and we're going to try and, uh, start working on the trail around the quarry so that we can make it so that it's handicap accessible and things like that, so more people can use it. Um, seems to be kinda, everybody's in agreement on starting at that point first, doing some cleaning up of the trees that have been knocked down, things like that. So that's kinda where we're at right now. Wednesday, there's a quarry committee meeting at six P M., so whoever would like to come and see what's going on. You're more than welcome. Wednesday, there's a quarry committee meeting at six P M., so whoever would like to come and see what's going on, you're more than welcome, and uh, we're gonna come up with some more ideas and try and set some more times and what we're gonna do with this festival, so that at the next meeting, we can start moving forward with it all. Thank you.
Consider act on Willow Park vandalism?
Over the last couple of months, I had Gary and Ellen and Jim go down to Willow Park. We've been having people come down there and doing donuts on the grass, and doing donuts uh in front of the shelter on the granite, and even on the main road. Um, we've caught one person, and he had citations, that was a resident, and the rest of them, but one that we had, we caught, and that person was from Park Falls, and the, all the other ones that have been going on, we can't get license plate number, because our cameras aren't located in the, when we catch them, when they come in and come out, they have to be kinda like by the park, our shelter area, so we can read license plate number. So, we're gonna have to do something, because it really escalated this year as far as vandalism, and um, and uh later on, I'll put on a agenda I can propose, and that, to close it off in the winter for uh more vehicle traffic, because we have a lot of problems in the winter also, with them doing donuts and stuff out there, and there's only a couple inches of uh snow, and tearing up the grass, so, um, I think the only way, I wish Kyle was here, but I think the only way that we're gonna be able to catch these peoples, is we have some type of camera that can get them coming in and going out. Until we do that, we'll never catch half of these guys, and surprisingly enough, it's not the residents, anybody who lives here, it's somebody that doesn't live here. The last one just got four citations, I think we got two people now out of Willow Park, and that person was from Otoma, so.
So your recommendation is that we're?
Recommendation that we find a way to put a camera on the entrance and exit of the, of Willow Park.
On a fire pole?
Yeah, someplace, so when they come in and they leave, we could get, we could stop if they get in on it, you know, to see it, we just, unless they, the last guy was real dumb, he just did a donut, and then he parked and had a cigarette right, right in front of the shelter, else we could read his number, count how many years he had on his chin.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, did Kyle say he got the person identified that did it going on the outbound side too?
No, we couldn't get that on camera, cameras can't get out that far, and then we had another one in the middle do a donut, and we just had a flash of a white car, but we, no one paid it, uh Kyle would read it, recognize it, and come get the license plate, so we had no idea who did it.
So we're looking at possibly putting one more camera on the exit, two more?
Entrance, coming in and exit, because a lot of times, they'll come in and turn around and go right back out again.
Okay.
So if one camera coming in would probably help, but if we can't see them do it, you know, you come there the next day, and you, you didn't see, that area is not, you know, photographed, doesn't?
Have we talked to anybody as far as getting any estimates on these cameras?
No, I just wanted to bring it up to the board uh tonight.
So then, as of right now?
If you come up with a solution, how we can better identify the people that, that are doing this, because this year, it just, I mean, they dug out, they dug the grass out, now we got the.
Who did we go through for the last cameras?
Pardon me?
Would we go through for the last camera that we got down there?
What did we go through?
Yeah.
Oh, what's his name? I don't even think, I can't even remember his name, Kyle, no.
It's Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, there you go.
Okay.
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, whatever his business name is.
Quick.
Quick.
Yeah, okay, so, I guess we need to get ahold of him and uh try and get some sort of an estimate as to what we're, what it's gonna take in order to get a couple more cameras down there.
I can do that, and I'll bring it to the next board meeting.
Alright, so as of right now, we're just gonna postpone this till the next meeting, and you're gonna bring us some estimates?
Yes, I will.
Alright. We should be able to cover the island then too, with that camera on that pole, I would think.
Yeah, kind of, they don't, they kind of leave that alone, because there's memorial there, there's memorial there now, and they seem to be really behaving themselves there, just, every place else, it's just, I don't know, I don't know how to stop it, I wish I knew.
The thing that bothers me is there's gonna be a matter of time before somebody figures they got a way to get out on that ball field. They're running into fences and everything else.
Alright, so we're gonna be moving on now to police and fire, Tim Hager and Dylan Gray.
Well, Fire District, uh, Mark Bioski gave us a very nice uh detailed report, all the members have it. I don't think we need to have any discussion on that, just give us all the general expenditures and maintenance costs that the uh district has to pay for continuously. It's just not a cheap operation, like I said before, it's very expensive, so, we gotta keep them funded. And as far as police goes, Kyle's been very busy up at the quarry writing tickets. We had several, we had several incidents this weekend over there, on Saturday. People driving up on the point, parking their vehicles, and taking out gun equipment, and coolers and tents, and having a good old time. See what I? Yeah, I guess we'll move on to two then. Consider act or approve around invoice for motorola solutions for annual maintenance on the amount of thirteen eighty-seven seventy. The radios, any questions on that?
Second.
I can get a motion first, Ellen?
I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Nope, I'm just asking if anybody had any questions.
Pretty soft this time.
Yeah, it's good, the software updates.
Our motion to act on item number two under police and fires.
Second.
Sorry, Ellen.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, water and sewer, Matt has now moved on, so Mark.
Want to be upbeat?
Yeah, so, one of the projects that we've been working on is biological phosphorus removal, it's where we're trying to grow organisms that remove phosphorus without the addition of chemicals, so we've been seeing signs of bio-OP, the plus side to this is we're growing, yeah, growing organisms without chemicals, with the new discharge permit approaching, we're anticipating that the D N R is gonna be lowering our phosphorus look, discharge limit, that leaves us with two options, we must have to add a multi-million dollar phosphorus filter to the plant, or try to achieve this biological phosphorus rem- removal, which we were able to see signs of with a couple additions of gates to slow down flow, and adding a V F D that we had in-house, so we got to install all that, well, essentially free of cost, and we were actually able to see the removal of phosphorus with like ninety percent less chemical so far during the summer in these warm temperatures, so, we're talking about saving the village millions, so that's pretty exciting.
Will that continue in the winter, when the temperatures are cooler, or?
It'll be harder, but with the amount of chemical that we are able to save throughout the warm temperatures, should definitely have no problem reaching a lower limit with Philly. A little bit of chemical and the bio-OP.
Okay, well, that's good news, thank you.
Yep. And then, there's the P Phos, you're all aware that the P Phos came back with a no-detect, and now that we had a no-detect, the D N R has canceled our, um, it was supposed to be four-quarter testing, so the last, the next three-quarters, they canceled it, because we detected no P Phos in our water at all, so we're gonna be able to save the last, um, it's actually on here at number two, the last one was thirty-two hundred and fifty-four dollars for just that one test, so we'll be able to save that three times more.
Awesome.
And then, the project on the north clarifier where they replaced the aluminum wheels and baffles by crane, that was done, and that was done two weeks ago, and the final cost come back a hundred and twenty-six dollars less than what was quoted.
Those are the lift station repairs?
No, the, the two clarifiers that are on the east side of the ditch, yeah, the round clarifiers, the south one, we had replaced last year, and then we had it approved in November of last year to have the north one rebuilt, and they finally got all the parts in, and then got it changed out here three weeks ago. We'll be putting that one online this week. And then, we'll be getting quotes from, for adding a well, or a V F D on well two, it's got one that currently doesn't have a V F D, and that's a variable frequency drive, so it'll actually turn the motor on slower and let it get up to pressure without having a big pressure surge right when the well turns on every time, easier on the water system. So that's what we have for the project that is.
Did you get the lift station fixed, or is that put off yet?
That one's still postponed yet, until we can get another set of hands.
To a man role, okay.
Well, that's some great news, glad to hear it all, thank you.
Yeah, Glenn, did you have any chance to discuss possible weekend work with past employees?
Um, yeah, it didn't go well.
Okay, that's what I figured, I just thought I got.
We had a conversation, and it, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna try it again.
Okay.
I'm gonna try it again, but Matt is gonna fill in next month.
Alright.
We gotta get ahold of him, get our schedules.
Item number two, consider act on approval of invoice from Badger Labs in the amount of three thousand two hundred fifty-four for well one and two testing?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one.
Consider act on termination of phone service to the twin-tine lift station.
That one has a backup dialer to it, and we had that project for putting the radios at all our lift stations, so that they can talk to our SCADA system, and then call us out on our on-call phone, and that system is working, and I have been testing it out, so I feel there's no reason that we should be spending fifty dollars a month for that phone line.
A motion, or item number three on sewer and water, or, sorry, item number two, or, no, three, yes.
Three.
Sorry.
Motion to terminate the phone service.
Second?
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Discuss, consider act on adjustment of second quarter utility bill for four sixty-five Pine Street. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That was a previous request?
Yes.
From last meeting, which was?
Did it?
Are they here?
No, but did you do any investigation as far as dropping any dye in it, or it didn't get that far?
It's, it's enacted.
Okay, well, then, I don't believe there should be any adjustment to the bill, you use the water, you gotta pay for it like everybody else.
Well, and that's what we did to the other fellows, so.
That's right, yeah, that's. Put a little sprinkle on outside water your garden.
Okay, you making the motion then?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, you wanna make the motion, Mike?
Pay the water utility bill the way it says.
So there's no?
No adjustment, no. I don't get mine adjusted.
Gary, you're seconding it?
Yep.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Consider act on customer request to combine lots into one tax parcel.
Okay, so, um, they can get a, an email from the county, um, asking um if the village allows uh combining lots, and the purpose would be to avoid the P F P charge, right, if you own two lots, um, and they're both taxable, um, parcels, you know, I can see somebody requesting to combine them into one, right, um, and it happened, somebody actually went to the county, uh, and the county relayed the request back to the village, and so, um, I got ahold of Dan, and we kicked it around, um, he has not, um, actually responded, uh, he did say it's, it's gonna take a little time, but in the meantime, I did contact the Public Service Commission, and, directly, and, um, you can see his response here, I just, uh, there's a, there's, let's see, I thought that was a, oops. Oh, okay, there were two pages. Uh, let me go to that one. Okay. So, the bottom, I just simply asked, um, um, you know, we've got the situation, are we allowed to do that? And, uh, if I understand, you know, his response correctly, um, he said, uh, yes, we did, right, we, there, you cannot um, allow a resident to do that, because when the tariff was actually calculated, it was done with all those lots in mind. So the only way that, um, the village can approve, uh, somebody com- combining lots, is if they go back and apply back to Public Service Commission with this in mind, and then they will go back and look at the hundred and seventy lots that are empty, and they'll reallocate that and spread those costs back on other people, so, that's how the state does, does business, um, and that is our response, so, when, when, Becky, when somebody responds, requests, uh, the response is no, unless they come to the village board, and ask the village board to restart this calculation process, which is a whole nother, uh, request from Public Service Commission, so, um, I think we've got our answer, um, you know, there's, there's, there's reasons why you wanna keep lots small, right, um, it's, it's good for the tax base, if, if everybody that had, had double lots, uh, had multiple lots, combine them into one, that might just be one house instead of three, not great for cash flow on the tax side, right?
So that was only allowed when you were a village board member, because that happened in two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, I don't know what happened in eighteen, um.
It was allowed.
I can't respond to that, but I'm just telling you what, you have the paper in front of you, it's highlighted, we asked the question, can we? Todd Line, no, you can't, not unless you go through these, uh, you know, these, these, um, well, reapply for the recalculation, right, um, or go through, and, or this could be done when we do our full rate case in a couple of years. So there's, there's two methods, it's not in this email, I don't believe, um. So, yes, backside. Those are the two, uh, two ways to do it.
Oh, for example, Glenn, I got four lots.
Yep.
Two are approved, two aren't, the two that aren't are not legally buildable, and the village red-granted, because they don't meet the lot line requirements.
Do you get a, a tax bill for those?
Yes.
For those two unbuildable lots?
Yes, I do, separate from miles.
Why are they not buildable?
Because they're not big enough, thirty-three, thirty-three, sixty-six, doesn't give enough for the lot line front size.
Yeah, I don't know why, so they, they actually, you are actually getting two P F P charges?
Yep.
Or four?
Two.
Two, so two are not, the other two are not.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so however they, they calculated that, um, and that's, that's, and then we took those, those numbers and went through the list and, and, you know, determined which.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you got, you got, uh, two acres of land, and that's a lot, well, that's a different story, you can build on that, and anybody can, but you know, if you got built, unbuildable land, I think they're, I'm gonna have to look at some exceptions down the road here.
Yeah, that's gonna be a board decision, I'm just saying, currently, right now, we know we got our answer from, he's gonna look at, you know, the emails that I sent him, he didn't have time. See, I was gonna look at, you know, the emails that I sent him, he didn't have time. Um, but he did respond, he'll look at them and just, just to confirm. I don't think anything's gonna change because we got it right from, um, you know, the state, so.
Nah, they make up tomorrow and they change it next week.
Well, as of this time, there's really nothing to act or consider on. This has gotta be postponed till the next meeting anyways because Dan needs to. Give us information on this, correct?
Right.
Okay, so then I guess we're gonna have to postpone this one till next board meeting. Alright, so street sidewalks, ditches.
On monthly update.
Um, so the slide in the Vets Park is completed along with, uh, with all the chips spreading around. Um, uh, the topsoil's been, and it's been spread and then seeded in areas where we removed the stump. Removed the stumps. After, uh, Labor Day, we plan on going back in there and then doing some more fixing on the lawn. Um, putting some more topsoil down and seeding it, um, because it really got beat up. And there's been, there's a lot of holes throughout that whole park that just need to be leveled off, so. Cause that kinda ends up being a trip hazard and I just, I think if that part deserted, it looks as nice as it can. Um, we started today, uh, painting crosswalks. They got all the side roads done today. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna start on the crosswalks on twenty-one or Berman. So we should be done Thursday morning with that. Uh, three benches, uh, were painted and replaced with new, uh, with new seats and backs. Uh, them are the ones that are by the flower pots between the hair shop and the bar. And, uh, we also, uh, redone one that was in Vets Park too. Took out the old, the old boards that were warped and put on painted ones and looks pretty good, I guess. Uh, more fire numbers and street signs are gonna put up. Uh, we do that when we get up a couple hours, we just run out and. Straighten poles up and put up new signs, so we just, that's an ongoing thing. Uh, I moved the road sides and ditches with the county flail this year. Um, we have about five hours stuck on that doing ditches and road sides. Um, couldn't get them all done because of just, just the amount of time that we had. Um, I wanna have a big thank you to John Crowell and Sandy Zeke, uh, for their hard work on keeping Pine Street ditch clear brush. That helps me out a lot. Uh, now I can maintain the brush that's there with, with, uh, with spray and stuff. So they, we always have a better flow and we found some problems there after John cleaned out the, cleaned the brush out of there. It'll have to be addressed next year. Um, it has to be cleaned out on that one end. It's backing up in the culvert and building up, uh, soap in the culvert. Um, thanks goes out to Dave Crowell for his work on keeping library grounds small and free weeds. I don't touch it at all. He takes care of it for us and, uh, and it looks really nice. He keeps the parking lot clean and all weeds down and mows it. So, thank you. I mean, we need, I made a lot of nice people in this village and, and, uh, and a lot of them do a lot here. And there's some that I promised to do things for and has fixed in their lawn and I haven't gotten to it yet. And I apologize for that because I beat my head every time I go by, they're like, I keep forgetting to fix your lawn, but it, it will get done. You gotta keep pestering me, okay? Alright.
Jim, have you considered writing stuff down?
No, I got a memory like an elephant.
So, so that's all I have for, for that. I just appreciate everybody's help. Because, uh, we are, you know, I have two park climbers and, uh, it's been a hot summer and with that smoke. I had to send one of them home a couple of times and we just got really behind with all the park equipment that we had to put in and. Things like that and the trees taken down, so anybody that helps like that, I just appreciate it and I think the board appreciates it also. Cause it really does help me out a lot. And that's all I have.
Do you get, um, any of those banners? That banner that you showed me or?
Hopefully, uh, tomorrow, after we get done, we can paint twenty, uh, Berman, we can paint half all the way down. And then the next day, we have to paint the other half, so when we get that, then we'll probably go tackle that. So. Well, I wanna get them, my goal is to get them up before Labor Day amongst other, uh, other things too.
Alright, so item number two, consider act on replacing two culverts on Dietrich Street.
Um, I had, uh, Tim out a long time ago with that culvert. And I just had Mark all last Saturday and we looked at the culvert on North and, uh, Dietrich. And that culvert is starting to collapse. And, uh, it, it's my target next year to have that, I'll, I'll rip money that we got to resurface that, that road. Um, the, the, um, the intersection is too narrow. I know a couple of guys before me dumped a plow truck over the edge because they can't make the turn. Cause it's just too narrow of a, of an intersection. Um, so we, so we need to put a new culvert in there, um, and widen it out somewhat. Um, well, Mark and I were there. I didn't know this because I do go around as soon as we get a, a major rainstorm. But he said that his backyard, it overflows and his backyard gets flooded in, um, uh, big rainstorms, which I didn't know. So it can't get through the culvert, cause again, it's all collapsed. And the bottom is all rotted out. There's nothing in the bottom at all anymore. What's gonna happen is after we spend all our money on. On, uh, with our state aid money and all of a sudden, um, in the middle of winter, it's gonna collapse and we have no money to fix this. Uh, I think we need to be proactive on it, um, especially whenever we pave a road, we always replace culverts. Cause you don't wanna go back in a year later and dig up a new road and replace the culvert.
Yeah.
So I had Prime Mark, the commissioner from Washere County out there. Um, and, uh, the culvert, um, there would be a fifteen by thirty-seven in, uh, foot culvert by. By where the, um, right by Lilo's there, there's a ditch or there's a culvert that drains across there. Um, that culvert's in pretty good shape, so we'd be able to use that culvert in a different project that we have up down the road. Um, and that's includes, uh, the base aggregate and then two inches of pot mix. Cause we're gonna blacktop over them areas. I'm not gonna leave them on gravel throughout the winter. Um, so that one there, he has it at, uh, fifty-nine hundred dollars. The culvert at Dietrich and North Street, that's the one that's collapsing and, uh, holding the water back. That's only a fifteen inch culvert. We're gonna put an eighteen by forty-five foot culvert there so we can widen out the intersection. And then it'll be, uh, and then widen out approximately twelve feet to improve terrain for the snowplow and other vehicles. Um, backfill will come from the village, cause we do have a pile that we can use, uh, for backfill. And then they also paved that intersection too. And that's sixty, sixty-six, uh, fifty. So it's around twelve thousand dollars for, for the doing two pipes. Um, if we did both at the same time, it would save a thousand dollars from that price. So it'd be around ten thousand dollars to do that. I do have the money and from the thirty-eight thousand I got this year to do this job. Um, it's always beneficial to do culverts a year before, so it has a chance to settle. So then they do repave the road. You don't have that settling later on, which we all see, you know, especially in the spring. Where the culvert settle. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm asking you if that's okay to do that, um, or what's your recommendation?
Well, I don't want you going through the windshield on the snowplow in the middle of winter, so I think we need to get them done this year.
I think it's a good idea.
Motion to approve item number two on the street sidewalk stitches.
I will second it.
For ten thousand.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to miscellaneous business. Consider act on approval of temporary operator's license for Red Granite Advancement Association for Brenda Mastercola. Gail Parati, Tricia C, and Dave, David Hempel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Number two. Consider act on approval of temporary Class B retailers license for Red Granite Advancement Association. On September second through fourth, twenty twenty-three at Veterans Memorial Park. And September, uh, second through fourth, twenty twenty-three at Willow Park.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three, consider act on request to close Franklin Street between Pine River Street and Maple Street on Friday. September first, tw- twenty twenty-three after Meal Site closes through Monday, September fourth, twenty twenty-three at eight PM.
Motion to act on item number three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, consider act on request to close Willow Park, close Willow Creek. On one-way road going into park and uncover the direction sign on the one-way going out of park. On Saturday, September second, twenty twenty-three from eight AM to two PM.
Motion to act on item number four. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider act on request to change direction of Willow Creek One Way Road coming out of the park. For available parking in Willow Creek Park for Kids Rock on Saturday, September second, twenty twenty-three. From eight AM until two PM.
Motion to act on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider act on closing Corey Park early on Sunday, September third, twenty twenty-three at three PM in preparation for the fireworks.
Motion to act on item number six.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Number seven, consider act on request to close Division Street next to Corey Park on Sunday, September third, twenty twenty-three. From five to eleven PM for fireworks.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, consider act on request to extend the noise ordinance on Saturday, September second, twenty twenty-three. At Willow Creek Park to eleven PM for music, uh, and Sunday, September third, twenty twenty-three at Corey Park. To eleven PM for fireworks.
Take a motion on number eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine, consider act to approve the contract insurance requested and permit from Wolverine Fireworks Display Inc. For Sunday, September third, twenty twenty-three for fireworks display.
Motion to act on item number nine. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discuss consider act on additional police reserve for Labor Day event.
We don't have any police reserves. I advise them as normal, they have to provide, they are paying for two reserve deputies from the sheriff's department and they pick up the tab. So two Saturday nights for the music and then one Sunday for the fireworks. And that financial cost is paid forward directly by the advancement association.
Okay, so then there's nothing for us to act on there. Uh, number eleven, consider act on approval of application for operator's license effective August twenty-second. Twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for Kylie's. Splinter at Rick's Irish Pub.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was there any, there was? Nothing, okay. Um, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven, or number twelve, consider act on approval of application for operator's license effective. August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for Amanda Lipkowski. The post office bar. No problems?
Um, not within the last ten years.
Okay.
Motion to approve the license for Amanda Lipkowski.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items to be placed on next regular board meeting agenda.
Put a trustee on the board.
Yep. That'll be on there.
For the last, the last meeting, it said, uh, items to be placed on the next board meeting, which is this one. The agreement on five eleven Horn Street with Dan Sandali. Uh, donation from Ambets. From Mary Wyack and. Simple rate. Study case, those, any of those on? Your agenda for this?
Mary has been in contact and with Jim Fredericks. As to what he'd suggested trees, possibly a handicapped picnic table. Uh, at least one or two would be an idea and benches and trees for the parks. So those ideas have been given to Mary for the, um, auxiliary.
Do we have any updates on Horn Street, five eleven Horn Street from Dan?
As far as I've been aware, made aware, things have been at least somewhat moving along. Have there been any difficulties since then?
Uh, we met on this Friday.
I figured that was coming on.
This Friday, by the end, it's not up to snuff, you know, big actions starting on the Monday.
Okay, so Friday's the deadline. Okay.
Yeah, they had a dumpster up there, so they were working on it.
Um, any other items that we need placed on next board meeting?
Reconsider cameras for the vandalism at Willow Creek Park. And it was number five of the sewer water agenda. Consider act on customer request. Nope, wasn't that one. Number four, me. We kind of put that to the side on one of them. Yeah, number five.
And then, uh, that was the cameras.
And that was the cameras. We need a meeting day for the sewer and water.
Yep.
To talk to those people.
Um. Mark, did you wanna try and set something up, uh, as far as a meeting for the sewer and water so that we can? Is there any days or times that work best for you?
Well, this Friday, I'll. I'll be free in the afternoon, but we don't usually meet on Fridays. Basically, any heads up that I get, I can probably make work. That Glenn's gonna be there, so I'm assuming, so whatever works for him.
So you want me to talk to Glenn and get a date set?
Yeah, give me a call.
Give you a call, okay. So I'll get that set up with Glenn.
And that was sewer and water number five.
Yeah, I think he's, we're gonna postpone that too.
You gotta talk to Glenn.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Alright, anything else we can think of at the moment? Alright, do I hear a motion, a motion to?
Update on the webpage.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep. Alright, update web.
I think we need to go back to Tuesday, right?
Do we even need to have that approved? They can change that at any time, right?
Yeah, we can get that changed. Becky, we can, when you get back, we can probably get that taken care of, correct? Alright. Alright, motion to adjourn?
Second. Or motion to adjourn?
I'm second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion, we are adjourned at seven forty-three PM. Thank you, folks.